Hi.
Hi.
Hi. I will call the study session to order and roll call, please. Mayor McLean? Here. Mayor McLean to the side.
Here.
Councilor Keller?
Here.
Councilor Miranda?
Here.
Councilor West?
Here.
Chair Rasmussen?
Here.
Vice Chair Wilk?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Shapiro?
Here.
Commissioner Dowd?
Here.
Thank you. And may I ask the Chair of the Commission to lead us in the pledge?
My pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Item number one. Who's going to speak? Phil? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor McLean and council members, and Chair Rasmussen and Arts Commissioners. My name is Phil Lantus and I am proud to be the Arts and Events Manager for the City of Santa Clarita. Tonight I will be presenting an overview of the 2020 Arts Commission Work Plan and the 2020 Public Art Report, which were both adopted by the Commission this summer. The work plan overview will give updates on recommendations from the Arts Master Plan that the Commission has identified as priorities since the adoption of the plan in March 2016. This will include the status of recommendations that are still being worked on, the ones identified as priorities for 2020, and a list of ones that have been classified as completed. Each recommendation is assigned to an Arts Commission Subcommittee comprised of two commissioners. This allows for work to be done outside of the regular monthly meetings. The only remaining recommendation from the Arts Commission's first work plan is Recommendation 7.1, which suggests forming an Arts and Business Leadership Council. The President of CalArts, Dr. Robbie Rajon, has agreed to lead this group and we have been working with members of his staff to plan the launch of the council in early 2020. From the 2018 work plan, there are three recommendations still being addressed. The first is Recommendation 2.4, beginning development of creative live-work spaces in Old Town New Hall. An informational report was presented to the Arts Commission at their meeting earlier this month that detailed how nonprofit developers create live-work facilities in partnership with municipalities. One of the organizations in the report, Place, which is located in Minneapolis and developed the Wave in Ventura, is planning on doing a site visit the next time they are in Southern California to provide additional information about their development process. The next recommendation, convene a citywide arts education collaborative, has been mostly achieved as the group was born last summer, comprised of representatives from the school districts, COC, CalArts, the LA County Department of Arts and Culture, formerly known as the LA County Arts Commission, and local arts organizations. The county has agreed to lead the collaborative through a valley-wide strategic planning process over the next two school years. Developing a comprehensive art marketing program is the next recommendation. The city contracted with landmark advertising and design from Kansas City earlier this year to develop a plan that builds on existing resources, including the sancreitaarts.com website that the city launched in late 2016. The consultants have completed two of the three phases of the plan and will be presenting the complete plan to the Arts Commission in November of this year. For 2019, the Commission identified five recommendations that are currently being worked on. The first recommendation, 2.2, began exploring a museum in Old Town New Hall. The New Hall Arts District Subcommittee is working with staff to identify potential museum concepts that would serve the community, attract tourists, and reflect the identity and culture of our community. The goal is to present a concept plan to the full Commission this winter. The next recommendation is to explore developing the San Clarita Valley's historical assets. As you are all aware, Santa Clarita has a very rich history and it was something the consultants who developed the Arts Master Plan recognized made Santa Clarita a unique community. The goal is to hold a meeting with representatives from local historical organizations and start a conversation about how to continue to highlight Santa Clarita's history into the future. The next recommendation, adopt a three-tiered process for developing arts grants and public art projects. This recommendation has been partly achieved as the public art planning and selection process that the council adopted in 2016 includes three tiers. Discussions regarding how to apply this approach to grants are currently underway. The next recommendation is to develop a Creative Industries Directory. The city hosted an intern through the LA County Department of Arts and Culture this summer. And the intern worked on two items. The first was expanding the Creative Directory section on the sancreitaarts.com website. And the second was to begin to research the best approach to develop a Creative Industries Directory. These recommendations are being explored with the goal to develop the directory in the coming year. The next one is increase culturally diverse programming. An assessment of current events and programming in Santa Clarita has been developed and will be presented to the Arts Commission at their meeting on October 10. After the Commission has received the assessment, the Diversity and Inclusion Subcommittee will determine the next steps to achieve this effort. The Commission has identified five recommendations for 2020. These include Recommendation 2.3, continuing to add public art in Old Town New Hall; 2.6, developing a film festival drawing on San Clarita's heritage; and this one will be partially addressed by a new event, the New Hollywood Silent Film Festival, which is scheduled to be held from February 14th to 16th, 2020, in William S. Hart Park and other venues in New Hall. The festival is being produced in a partnership between the city and the county's Natural History Museum and marketing for the event will begin to be pushed out next month. Another identified recommendation for 2020 is 3.3, to expand the arts classes offered for children, youth, and adults through the city. There are many wonderful classes currently offered through the Seasons Magazine, but this effort will identify opportunities to expand and enhance the arts classes being offered. And the last two recommendations for 2020 are 5.5, includes cultural spaces in the Saugus Library. As this project moves forward, it is a wonderful opportunity to include artistic and cultural spaces; and 6.3, business and career training for artists. The city already offers some development opportunities, including the upcoming Second Annual New Heights Artist Develop Symposium, which will be held at the center on Saturday, October 26th. But there are definitely opportunities to continue to expand these efforts. Many of the recommendations identified in the Arts Master Plan have either been completed or are at a stage where the Arts Commission does not have any immediate action to address the recommendation. Regarding the public art program, the City Council approved a planning and selection process and created the Civic Art Program, thank you very much, which allocates 1% of eligible CIP projects to public art projects. Additionally, two on-call arts consultants have been hired to advise the Commission, staff, and the artist selection committees on the public art program. And with the adoption of the 2019-20 budget, the temporary public art program has been created. The City Council has also approved an agreement with the New Hall School District to help support the operations and maintenance of the New Hall Family Theater for the Performing Arts. The Arts Commission have developed their annual work plans and this evening we are holding the Second Council and Commission Joint Study Session. Additionally, last summer, an amphitheater feasibility study was developed and presented to the City Council. Recommendation 5.3, to develop a community arts center has been in discussions with the county for the Old Senior Center for the last couple of years and earlier this month, Supervisor Barter expressed her strong interest in pursuing this concept. Creative Connection, a leadership training program that matches business and community leaders with nonprofit arts organizations, is currently recruiting participants and will officially launch next month. Finally, the Arts Commission created a Diversity and Inclusion Subcommittee shortly after the Arts Master Plan was adopted. Excuse me for a moment as I change to a new PowerPoint. The 2020 Public Art Report. Part of the public art planning and selection process that was adopted in 2016 is for the Arts Commission to create an annual report, which details where various projects are in the development process and looks ahead to share what projects will be developed in the coming year. One of the public art pieces that was completed this year was Imagine by Australian artist Emma Anna. This piece was installed outside the Valencia Library and has quickly become a landmark for the area. The dedication was held in June and I believe most of you were in attendance. The second public art project that was completed this year was the Sidewalk Poetry Project, which imprinted nine poems around the community. The dedication was held last week. The next project, which will be completed next month, is a project of the skate park. The artist Miguel A. Del Rio met with members of the skate community for feedback and input and then developed the approach in art design. The dedication ceremony is planned for October 19. Another project that will be installed later this year or perhaps early next year will be California Skate at Fair Oaks Park. The artwork created by Forma Studios will be his stone piece surrounding a tree. The three images on the slide shows how the relationship between the art piece and the tree will change over time. There are currently four projects in some phase of development. The first one is a Civic Art Project called Communitree, which will be located in a plaza near the intersection of Solidad Canyon Road and Sierra Highway at the New Canyon Country Community Center. The piece designed by artist CJ Rynch will serve as a focal point for the community and will be installed prior to the opening of the center. Additional public art opportunities are being explored for the community center site. At this month's Arts Commission meeting, the Commission selected artist Roberto Belvato to do a community engagement process for the public art to be located at the new Sheriff's Station. The process will include meeting with sheriff's personnel, junior high school students, and the general public to inform the design of the artwork that the artist will be proposing. The artist's proposal will come to the City Council for approval in early 2020. An informational memo will be shared with the City Council shortly to provide more information about the community engagement process. The Art Tree Community Art Center created six metal panels with art from local elementary school students as part of a city grant-funded program a few years ago. Staff is developing the best approach to install the pieces at Todd Longshore Park and this installation is scheduled to occur this coming spring. A Civic Art Project has been identified for the Saugus Library. Once the next phase of the CIP project commences, the public art project will begin being developed. There are several projects identified for the coming year. First is the next cycle of Sidewalk Poetry. The deadline for submissions for poems is October 31st and those poems are being accepted through the sancreitaarts.com website. The imprinting of the new poems will take place in spring 2020 as part of the Sidewalk Rehabilitation Program. The next project is a bike rack to be located at the New Canyon Country Community Center. Submissions for this project closed last week and the bike rack will be installed and dedicated when the center is opened. As mentioned previously, the City Council approved funds to create a temporary art program as part of the 2019-2020 budget. In the coming year, three projects will be implemented as part of this program. The first is two sculptural works at Trailheads in the community. The two sites identified for 2020 are Trailheads near Camp Plante and Solidad Canyon Road and McBee Parkway near the post office. The sculptures will be in place for three years and then new ones will be installed. Next year, two more locations will add sculptures and the following year, the final two locations will have pieces installed. So we'll have a total of six pieces at year three. The second project will utilize projections in Old Town New Hall to showcase the wonderful creative work by CalArts students. The leadership at the school is supportive of the concept and the technology needed is being researched. Finally, the third project is a very innovative concept, to have virtual reality art at various locations around New Hall. This would be similar to how the popular Pokémon Go app works. Staff is working with a local company that graduated from the city's incubator to develop the technology for this project. Once it has been figured out, then the selection process for artists will begin. I appreciate this opportunity to share the exciting things happening in the arts in Santa Clarita. On behalf of the Arts Commission and staff, I would like to thank the council for their continued support of arts and culture in Santa Clarita. The Commission and staff are available to answer any questions and thank you very much.
Wow, thank you. That is quite the agenda that has been completed. Amazing. Thank you, all of you, very, very much. Would any of you like to make any comments or suggestions? I'm going to call on the Commission first.
I guess I should go first. Okay. Do I need to use my microphone? Yes, please.
Hi, good evening, everybody. As the Chair of the Commission this year, I have to say that I've been pretty impressed with how much we're getting done. I think the staff has been unbelievably helpful in walking us through this project. I think the biggest thing for me, the public art that we're pretty out has been amazing and that's because you guys said, "Let's do it." And it's been great to have the community involved in it. Some of the ideas that come up, we are grateful to have our on-call artists that help us. We don't want to have another roundabout disaster so we've been very careful and very open about it and I think that with our committees, we're all taking turns being on some of these public art projects. I think it's been kind of a great process that we're going to build on as we go because it's new for us and we really want to make sure that the community loves the art as much as we do. So thank you for your patience and your willingness to believe in what we're doing and thank you for the staff. They helped us so much.
Same. I want to thank you as well. The public art is so exciting. Every time I drive by the library and see that, I'm so excited. It's just very neat. I just also want to thank you for your commitment to arts in Santa Clarita. You guys have been amazing and we really, really appreciate it. We obviously represent you so we hope we're getting it right. I think we are but hopefully you're proud of us. I think we try really hard to do a good job and I think arts in Santa Clarita is amazing. It's doing really well. Working with all the different people has been really a great thing.
Thank you. I hope you can keep them up.
Thank you. We would like to really thank our City Council, our City Manager and his office, our staff, and my fellow commissioners who all put in a lot of work with these projects. I think by planning ahead, by having the master plan with a limited number of new projects that we're doing each year so we keep it manageable, by having communication with you and really by making those processes better all the time. For instance, some of the public art things, we're learning from past issues. Some of them we sent back to bake a little further before we brought them out to the public. We said, "No, we need to see a couple more artists. We're not happy yet." Or just retool some of the things that we know aren't ready to present yet. So I think we have learned from that and I would echo just our staff's advice and Phil and the whole group is amazing. One thing that I'm very proud of is we've started the Creative Connection Program, which I know I've been talking about with each of you for some years, replicating the Rieden Board Leadership Program that they have down in Los Angeles and we finally are getting that moving. So it's really exciting. The goal is to bring representatives from our local industry and companies onto the boards of nonprofit organizations in the arts and to have that be something that is continually replenishing our philanthropic base in the community and to build those partnerships with our local industries and the arts. I think it's a real winner and we're really looking forward to that pilot program this year. But once again, thank you for working with us and listening to us and working with everything together. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much to staff and to the council for supporting the arts and for making the time to be here this evening. I know that we all feel like this annual or biannual joint study session is a really good idea. I feel like that with, and hopefully you all will have some comments or some questions or there'll be some things to discuss after we all say a little something. But I think that as we move through the process with the percent for arts of doing some of the larger public art projects that are going to be very visible and they're more costly than the projects we've done today, it's going to be very useful for us to have this time together to have dialogue and to get feedback so that everyone understands how our processes are working. What we've learned, I'm on the public art Subcommittee and what we've learned with the two large projects, Sheriff's Station, which is underway, and the Community Center, is that it's a complicated and very important process to make sure that we get correct. As we work through it and have more public art projects, I think there's going to be more opportunity for discussion and hopefully more learning on our parts when it comes to figuring out the best possible way to have the best choices for the best art for the things that are going to be around for a very long time, like what's happening with the Sheriff's Station. So I'm very happy that that particular project is going back to the community and particularly back to the sheriffs so that we can get more input from them before we move forward with the design. But thanks. Thanks for the arts and thanks for all of your other support. I'm really happy to be on such a, on a real working commission because there's a lot to do in terms of making the master plan happen and I feel very grateful to be able to work with staff who work like crazy and we keep them going with new initiatives and new ideas of things that we want to focus on every year. But it's really exciting to be a part of this process.
Thank you.
City Council and staff. Just to echo Susan's comment, my fellow commissioners, I think one of the things that you're hearing, hopefully that I'm clear, is that we really appreciate you and we also feel that this time that we have together is important. Both of our bodies are doing a lot of work, a lot of good work and just the ability to get together and share ideas is much appreciated. So thank you. So the other thing, I think, hopefully you get a sense of, is I think, Susan, you used the word grateful. I think that is shared by all of the commissioners. We just feel grateful to have this opportunity and certainly there's an amount of passion, not only with the fellow commissioners but absolutely with staff as well. One thing that I wanted to just pass along, it comes up at our meetings and I've been on the Commission since 2009 and it used to be, you know, you'd go to downtown New Hall and there's kind of something new periodically and there'd be something new in different parts of town. And today, it just feels like there's this cultural connectivity that is comprehensive across the city of Santa Clarita. And that's just, and it's palpable. It's something you can feel. At the Arts Commission, we kind of talk about the vibe of downtown New Hall. You now can walk from one end to the other and it's just, you know, I think it's becoming what we all hoped it would be many, many years ago and continue to look for. So I just want to thank you for your leadership and for your input and for the opportunity to continue to help support the arts in Santa Clarita.
Thank you all. Council?
Yes. So number one, I want to thank all five of you and of course the staff for doing a great job and getting us this far. We don't give you the biggest budget in the world but we do well with what we give you. You do more than well. We thank you for that. I do however have four questions and maybe I can be enlightened with the answers. Number one, what is our agreement with the PAC at COC in terms of usage? And are we using the PAC at COC to the extent that I think we should be using it? For community effects?
That's for Phil, I think.
I'll jump in on that one if you don't mind, Commissioner.
I don't.
We've been in agreement with the college since before the PAC even opened. It has moved up over the years. We're currently at, we split it at $80,000 a year and we use every date. This year, I think we're one date over what we're allocated on the weekend and I'm letting that slide. But it is used by the community to the level that the contractor specifies.
Could you give me an example of some of that usage?
Yeah, we are allowed 30 weekend days and 40 weekdays throughout the year, which is, that is figured out by a very complex formula based on when they're open and a percentage of when they're open. I believe we're at 31% of their open times. And, and the groups that are there are, are, are very appreciative. The costs are continuing to be a challenge for the groups, but we also have a section of the arts grants that helps underwrite that as well.
Okay, so along the same, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, could I, if I could jump on that very, very quickly, having been the executive director of the Santa Clarita Symphony when that was together, and, and it is vital for our local arts organizations to have the city as the facilitator of, of that, because the, you know, Phil helps with the scheduling of that, and they are, and so the arts groups en masse can come and get that scheduling together. If they were individually trying to book, book that time up there, they would not have the, the bravitas that the brain, that the city brings in with that to, to do it. So Phil does a great job with that, and I thought I had that. Right, and, and the reason for my question is, because I, I just want to make sure we're maximizing our capacity. And the question also applies to the New Hall Family Theater for the Performing Arts. What is our arrangement there, and are we using that?
So, it's oddly enough, it's basically the invert of, we have 40 weekend days and 30 weekdays, because the school and district usage tends to be more during the week. Last year, we, it was our first year of the agreement, and we didn't quite use all those dates. I don't know exactly how it's gonna work through this year, but it seems like there's been an increase. So we will come very close to the full usage dates allocated. I will say, they have a little more flexibility, because they don't have so many programs happening from the school or district. So if we were to go over, I think we could work that out with them at this point. But as it continues to grow internally for them, those scheduling challenges will grow in the future. And they've been a great partner so far, and, and very supportive of the arts groups that have come to them. Because the PAC is full, basically new groups get kind of shuttled over by myself or, or even folks at the college to say, "Hey, you should go talk to them, we don't have the dates to give." But, but there are probably about four or five groups now that have made a home of the, the New Hall Family Theater, which is great.
Right, the third question I have is SEV TV. Do we consider that part of the arts? And what are we doing, what are we thinking of in terms of future sustainability of SEV TV?
Actually, I'm gonna have to pass this one. Other than I can say that, other than ongoing partnership with SEV TV for like the Soundcheck Music Series that'll happen this Saturday at the main, and working together on promoting the arts and advertising or, or doing shows on, on programs or events that we do, we are not the direct contact, the Arts and Events Division is not the direct contact. I believe it's through communication, sorry, communications, who are the liaison.
Okay, but no one understand that, that I, I think that's a great opportunity to promote the arts. And I think it should be part of what the Arts Commission considers when they make their plans for the future. The last item I'd like to talk about is, is thinking big, really big, in terms of, you know, we're mentioning, finally acknowledging more the cultural diversity that exists here in Santa Clarita, and that's a very good thing. And we should continue to do that in everything we do. But has the commission thought of and considered a cultural center? Not an art center, not an art gallery, but a cultural center to promote cultural diversity here in Santa Clarita? Something along the lines of promoting Santa Clarita history. You know, we got a fantastic history of deep western culture here. We have a deep filming culture here. And something that would promote all of that, and, and that might be a permanent exhibit. And then we could have rotating exhibits of other cultures throughout the world. European, South American, African, Asian, as many cultures as we can rotate and as many cultures as we can get artifacts to present to the community. I think that would be a great idea for young people to learn, know, and understand the different cultures in our community. And we're growing culturally quite a bit. Has anyone considered that? And if you haven't, you should consider, considering that.
Yeah, I'd love to answer that one. Susan and I are on that committee, actually, and it's one of my passions, having culturally diverse events and maybe a place of being. We are very careful about trying to put too much on staff. You know, it's like, "Let's have a big party in the park, and we'll make it this, you know, cultural thing." And they have so much on their plate. So as a commission, we're trying to, number one, get through the master plan. But it is a passion of ours, Susan and I, we're just touching base on that right now, and kind of getting that information together. But I think all of us kind of love that idea. And as soon as they have some free time, like when they have interns in the summer, it'd be a great time to, to kind of jump on that and, and talk to you, that would be great, I would love it.
I'm very much available for that conversation.
Susan, you feel the same way, right? It's, it's one of our passions over there.
I do, and I'm, I'm hoping that, one of the recommendations about exploring our historic assets. I'm really happy that that was part of the master plan, and I'm, I'm happy that that's one of the things that we're gonna be looking at in the coming year. Because I think, starting by figuring out a way to really share and highlight the history that we have here, may be the first step in getting towards a place where we can even explore other cultures and other things. This is a remarkable place in terms of the history with, with filming, with the arts, with, just with important history having to do with gold and rail and everything else. And I think that, I think that we can be a place that really celebrates that and really makes the most of it. And I know, I know incidentally, because I know that there's been a lot of work going on at Heritage Junction, which I think is gonna be very helpful to that cause. And I'm really excited to be part of the Subcommittee that's gonna be meeting with historical society friends and other groups to try to figure things out. So maybe partly because I live with, I, I live with a very large number of Native American baskets, some of which are titanium, and I would very much like them to find a home. And share them with the community.
Anywhere. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Arts Commission, I really enjoyed the sidewalk art. I think these motivational little pieces of art and sidewalk around the town, which will grow forever, are a wonderful moment. It's like looking up and seeing blue sky and bright sun and pretty puffy clouds, it just makes you feel good for that instant, I just really like that. I do want to say, we are one of the richest culturally historic communities in the state. Probably unaware, but federally recognized is the entire 858 years at Metropole, which includes the Felton School, and Pico Number Four, which is First Oil in California, and, and the Metropole House, and you've got Colosseum, you've got the finer ore refinery in Lister. And Commissioner Shapiro is right, there's tremendous resurgence going on with city support, county support, and a lot of people's rolling up saying some hard work over at Heritage Junction. And the Pardee House will be opened, I'm pretty sure this next year, as a community's first museum. We have tremendous opportunity there already. It is a, a legacy project, and I'm personally quite involved with it. So, we are very unique, and we should keep looking at the fact that we have that history. People want to come here, they want to tour, they want to see artistic things, culturally rich things, they want to enjoy art, and they love touring around historical stuff. So we've got a lot going on with that. I want to comment something Bill said, SEV TV. You have a tremendous resource there, you have programming, things happen in a lovely place. And we're not filming it. I mean, the city really needs to direct some of that programming to go film it, because there's an awful lot of people at home that would really, like, "What's going on at the main?" Just put the camera in and let it roll. And I, I go over there and I'm just thrilled with some of the artistic programs, and they can just go on television. And, and I think we, we're losing some of that, because we're just having so much fun with it. We're not thinking about how to capture it and then reuse it, get it out to people that can't get out, seniors, people that aren't well, or people that just want to stay home and watch it. You've got the ability to do it, just do it, you, you already got the talent. I'm very proud of your plan. I can't wait to go to the art center, and I appreciate Supervisor Barker. She is very unique in her perspective about this, and I'm, I'm very pleased how much ground we're gaining. I did want to say, I'm thrilled about what we've done with the theaters. I like the art thing. I think that Art at the Sheriff's Station is indoor, correct? It's all indoor, so.
Sort of.
Pretty much indoor. I like that. And I'm very, very excited about being part of, being able to help with the Sonic Film Festival, which I, I think will be a continuing, ongoing thing. I come back to, I heard Patty say, I still think you need to put that giant cowboy down there.
And hold it around about one, to get back.
Giant iron cowboy, of course, because, you know, you're talking about film festival, you're talking about the home of the, of the, all the westerns was right here. And it's not expensive if you do it like you did it out at the Iron Horse towhead with iron cutout. It's pretty inexpensive, and it will look great as it rests. So, you don't always have to do things fancy and polished, you could do things unique. That's what you're doing with the sidewalk by embedding all the sites. This isn't expensive, you're gonna repair the sidewalks anyway. A lot of things we can do, and I am thrilled with the work that the staff's doing. And I applaud the Arts Commission, and it is a pleasure, it is a pleasure to support getting these projects. And thank the city manager while you're at it, because, you know, he's gotta make that budget work.
Well, did you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments, if I may. We got a couple of the original commission members, you know, John Dowell and Dr. Michael Miller. Going back to 2009, and I can remember from the city council perspective, when we approved that, that we need to have an arts commission, and with some discussion about, you know, there's so many opportunities and things that could be brought together if we had a group that could focus on them. And, and here we are, 10 years later, and I gotta tell you, it worked. It worked. You guys have done a phenomenal job, you really have. And I, I sat here and I, I don't say a whole lot, I just kind of listen, because I'm taking it all in when I look at the, the number of areas in which you've gotten into it and worked and come together and made recommendations. And it's, the thing is, this arts commission is working out phenomenally well. And, and I agree, it's always a team effort, guys, it's always a team effort. We've got a great team with the city, of course, and, and the community's involvement. And I just simply say thank you, and hang in there and keep up the great work, because I can only imagine what we've got in the future as you continue to put your edge together and come up with great things. Thank you.
Cameron's on here, and I just want to say, I think it was probably way back in 2008, Elite California Cities, when they were talking about arts programs and how, how they help with cities and how it's really a good thing to have. And I know that when I brought that information back, it was a twinkle in our eyes. But then, we got to talking about it, and we did enact the, the commission. And it has been fabulous ever since. And each one of you should be very, very proud. We've all done a great job in putting you on the commission. We knew what we were doing, and that is in evidence of all of the things that you have accomplished. Not with a whole ton of money, and that's coming. I mean, we will keep putting more in as much as we can, and with the business community being involved and such, I'm sure we'll, we'll get there much sooner and much faster. But I just want to thank you very much for all the work that you do, and our staff, and our city manager, and the public, because the public weighs in on it as well. So, I think this was a really good session, and I look forward to the next one, where we can discuss things that, that we're doing and things that we can do. So once again, I just want to thank you very much. And if, no more comments at the moment?
Can I just add one thing more?
Of course.
I want to say that it's been a real pleasure to represent all of you out there in the community, and I think that we're doing a great job, not just with the public enjoying our art, but with all the artist groups out there. You know, they know that they've got us here to, to tell you things. And we love having our little conferences with them, they come and talk to us, and, and it, it kind of helps kind of deflect things, and, and we could bring them all together and bring you the information. So I think, I hope you guys feel like we're doing a good job, because we, we like that a lot. We like going out to the public, wearing our little name badges and explaining what the Arts Commission is all about, and what we can do for the arts groups and the community. And so we love going to the events, and thank you for trusting us with that.
I just have one final comment for staff. Still need that permanent little sign hanging on the light post in downtown New Hall, pointing to the little art center there on Sixth Street. They really appreciate it, and it can just be like a flag that says, you know, "Arts." But they would really appreciate it, and I think it would be a special thing to do.
Okay, we didn't, we talked with them about it, and then they decided they really liked the little sidewalk thing?
The sandwich?
Yes, exactly. So maybe we can start that conversation again.
We're, we're happy to move back around with them. There were some challenges with what they were originally envisioning was street signage, which there are state laws about what kind of street signs can go in. So what their vision, we had encouraged them to look at partnering with their landlord, to see some options that way, and, and go through our process. As you know, you can put up art, you just have to go through a, basically fill out a, I think it's a temporary use permit or a conditional use permit. So they're, they're still looking at it. Archery, who was one of the main drivers for that, has had a change in leadership over the last few months, or about six months, I guess it's been. So I think they're focused on doing the work they, they need to do, and they haven't talked about signage. But we're absolutely open to it, as long as we can find a way to do it that meets the, the regulations and the sign restrictions, not so much our sign ordinance, but the state traffic sign challenges.
Okay, great. Recommended act from the city council and Arts Commission, receive the 2020 Arts Commission Work Plan and Public Art before we, do, do we need to vote on that at all, or just receive?
Receive.
Okay, great. Now public participation, do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
We haven't received any arts, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak?
Okay, very good, and we are adjourned.